Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for coming out, and I just want to introduce myself. My name is Brad Douglas. I believe formally with the agenda, I'm supposed to call this administrative public hearing to order. So just in terms of formalities, this is an administrative public hearing before myself and kind of the staff. There will be an additional public hearing for the actual elected body tonight at 6:00 PM. And then there's a third public hearing. We have to do three public hearings on October the 7th. So many of you may not be familiar with a lot of the government type stuff, so I'm going to try not to use a whole lot of acronyms or a whole lot of stuff that we just take for granted in our world that we deal with. So with the administrative public hearing, it's a pretty straightforward approach of just giving you all the information. Since it is a public hearing, you will have the opportunity to be heard because I am at the podium. We do not have it available for you to come and visit, so you will actually be able to just sit at your seat, state your name, your address for the record. Part of the public hearing process is to allow us to record and then convey to the elected body any public comments that you all may have. Once again, the idea behind the three public hearings is you're more than welcome to attend all three, but the state of Georgia deems it necessary and appropriate, as do I, that if you can make this one in the morning time but could not make an evening or that particular evening day, then there's another one. So you can come to all three, you can come to this, this one, but the elected body will have your public comments as if you were speaking to them, although I am not them. So nonetheless, welcome again. We will have the public comments limited to three minutes, just to kind of keep it flowing and everything. For the most part, we should be distraction free. I do have kind of our partners behind this public safety because you may be aware, we're dealing with a little bit of a weather event, and I just want to make sure that if we have to step out and recess for just a moment for something, we'll be back momentarily or one of the other staff members can kind of pick up. So needless to say, this is the City of Jasper Administrative Public Hearing, Thursday, September 26th, 2024 at 10:00 AM. It is in light of the fact that staff did recommend not to roll the millage rate back, so even though that there is a proposed 1.5 mil increase, if you do not roll the millage rate back, you still are required to have three public hearings on the process. So we will begin. What is a millage rate? And the simplistic part is you have a tax rate that is used to calculate local property taxes. So you have the county tax, the school tax, and the city tax. We'll also be discussing the city tax portion today because that's really the only thing we're authorized to say and really qualified to talk about. The property taxes oftentimes in government, it's confusing in terms of when you say, okay, well, what do you need taxes for? Well, part of it is is one source of revenue that does help offset some of the required services to provide to our community. So some of the services that we provide, police, fire, code compliance, planning and zoning, inspections, public works, which includes our streets, stormwater parks, administrative services, which is some of the internal functions to help support those external operational forces, the elections, municipal court, and patrol. You'll notice on here that there's no mention of water, wastewater. Those are what are considered enterprise funds or business funds. Those typically, and for the most part, are segregated away from the millage rate because they are a self-funded type of enterprise fund, and they're not included in the millage rate discussion. With respect to our current millage rate, the 5.221 mills, this is about how much we collected this year. I think we were originally at the mid-year budget amendment. We were at 1.68 million. I believe, Ms. Lindsay, we have sent out some notices to try to encourage folks to pay their due amount, and I do think that we will hit the 1.7.
We have hit 1.7.
We have hit the 1.7. So the reason I bring that up is oftentimes there is this understanding of, okay, well, what does my taxes use for? What do I do? You know, I'm, you know, what, why am I being taxed? Well, the idea is the general fund, remember, we have a general fund, the general services that we discussed just a moment ago, and we have enterprise. So with the general fund, it's about 7.6 million worth of expenditures to operate. So as an example, the 2024 public safety budgets, the police and fire departments combined 4.4 million. So as you can see, the actual millage rate that we collect from the real property would not fund the police or fire. It does help. It is a needed source of revenue to help offset some of those calls, but there are other fees and taxes that are needed for local governments to operate. Being from the local government, I can say that the proportion of taxes that we collect relative to how much we spend is pretty low. You do have some governments that operate closer to a 50% without getting into their financials. You want to stay in that 30% range. A lot of folks, when they equate their personal finances to taking out a mortgage, oftentimes you don't want to, you know, take out an mortgage that's going to eat up 50% of your salary. You want to keep it around that 30%. So as a practice, we typically try to say, yes, we do have these other sources of revenue, but those are more tenuous in nature that we have no control over as a municipality. We cannot really, we try to estimate what maybe some of the businesses or buildings or other franchise fees may actually come in, but if you had noticed in the January-July meeting, we did have to amend the budget, the 2024 budget that was approved last December because the revenues that had been coming in had not been realized at the estimated amount. So part of what we did is identify the need that we needed to adjust the 2024 budget mid-year so that that way, going into the second part of 2024, we could then come to a balanced budget at the end of December. At this moment, the only alternative was to utilize fund balance, which is essentially a savings account that the city would have. You want to carry over 17% to 25% in your savings account, fund balance, to help for those moments that you have some of those revenues not being realized. So to balance the 2024 budget, we had estimated that we're going to use a significant portion of our fund balance for 2024. So as the team and I, we started looking at the preparation of the 2025 budget, recognizing that there was no real opportunities or no appetite to reduce services, the only alternative was to suggest a millage rate increase because that was one of the revenue sources that we do have some level of autonomy in to help recapture some of the lost revenue. So going back to why are we here today? And part of it is, we deal with this kind of stuff on any given day. We're not dealing with, you know, rain issues or other boring stuff. The idea is you all, as taxpayers, just expect us to do our job, as do the elected officials. So one of the things that we try to do is say, it's called the Truth and Taxation Hearings. It's an opportunity for folks to come and listen to what we have to say. It is certainly agreeable that in your public comments, you can certainly disagree with any sort of managing philosophy. However, the idea is for us to present the information and then convey it to the elected body. So part of, going back to if you're not able to attend the other two public hearings, the purpose of this slideshow is to provide some level of consistency so then that way we can stay on track with conveying the same information to whomever attends. So some of you may have seen the notice, and in local government, I've been doing this for around 19 years, I'm actually excited when I see people attend public meetings because part of what you do not want to have if you're in local government is for people to say they did not know about something because then we've not done a good enough job, at least conveying the opportunity to articulate or communicate this information. So this way, you all are here today, so that means that perhaps you saw the notice, you may have seen a Facebook post, you may have seen a neighbor, top of the neighbor, so that is a good thing. We do want folks to be able to come and to be heard. It's not a debate, it's a public hearing, so unfortunately, you know, we can always discuss things in deeper detail later on, but just for a public hearing, it's a great opportunity to be heard. And Lindsay, do you want to talk about the 31% in terms of the way that we have to do it based upon our five-year tax history?
Sure. My name's Lindsay Williams, I'm a finance director for the City of Jasper. The 31% increase is based off your rollback rate. So we have, it's called a PT-32 form that we fill out that calculates this percent for us. It's provided to the Pickens County Tax Commissioner, and then they actually have to provide that to the state. And so the 31%, our rollback rate would have been 5.127, and since we're proposing a 6.721 millage rate, that equates to a 31% increase. So it's based off the rollback rate, it's not based off what our tax rate was as of last year, and our tax rate last year was 5.221.
Thank you, Lindsay. And so part of this, I do not expect you all to see that all that well, and quite candidly, you're probably not going to have much luck on this, but we're still going to give this out to you, and hopefully you'll be able to see it so you can kind of follow along with a little bit of what we have. And if we don't have enough, we'll get some copies and get it out.
This way.
So because I'm a city manager and I'm not a finance manager, I'm not an accountant, you'll see a disclaimer at the very bottom because finance worlds typically do not operate the way that management does. There's management, accounting, management, finance, illustrative purposes, just to be able to talk, or at least for me to understand. For the most part, the accuracy is pretty, I'm pretty confident in it, but there are issues where I don't include exemptions, but I know exemptions. I took about 15 property sample size to kind of get some sort of idea about a cross-section of the community, what maybe some would be in average. And then at the very bottom, below the yellow marking, is kind of a, just generic, that is a general idea. So you'll see in that left column, if you're looking left or right, at the top, the appraised value, that's the market rate. That is something that the county, Lindsay.
So your fair market value is the value that you're willing to sell your property for, is that fair market rate?
And so that's appraised not by us, but then the assessed value, and you'll see, I call it basically a tax rate. You're taxed at the 40%, so you're not taxed at the full appraised amount. So oftentimes, the idea is for the 5.221 millage rate that we currently have, you'll see in that third column what to expect to have paid for city property tax at that rate. The proposed 1.5 mil increase would be 6.721. And so this is what you have if you look at the far right, or not the far right, but the next to last column on the right, the tax rate of the 6.721, and then there'll be an actual difference of what to expect. I will tell you that the difference going from top to bottom, looking at the average based upon the sample size, is about $170 a year annually more than the property would be taxed at. Now, no one likes to pay more for anything, and that includes us. And unfortunately, we are not in a position of realizing discounts on supplies and materials and labor costs. Insurance is a big driver, provides property casualty, as well as health insurance. That is the bigger driver for providing to our employees. And I think as a managing philosophy, we want to continue to take care of our employees because I'm a employee-first manager, and that's part of what I've kind of advised the elected body, that you got to have good people, and then we can kind of work out all the other things thereafter. So the city management recommendation on the proposed millage rate is to address inflationary costs and the cost of supplies. There is no proposed increase in city personnel associated with this millage rate increase. Now, all that to be said, in the budget amendments in July, I had made mention to the elected body that we were not recognizing or realizing other additional revenue that had been forecasted in 2023. Last summer, 2023, there had been some forecasting of revenue streams that did not be realized this past summer and/or this year. And quite frankly, I did not anticipate that those revenues would come in in 2025 either. So in order for us to be able to present a balanced budget to the elected body, we felt as though that the prudent thing to do was to recommend raising the millage 1.5 mil. We still have some work to do relative to the 2025 budget because what we have to do is get some direction from the elected body on the October 7th meeting. The way that the process works is this is the first three public hearings. The second one will be this evening before the elected body. The third one will be the 7th at 5:30, which is preceding the 6:00 PM meeting of the elected body. They will then have to give us direction on what to set the mill to. So then that way, we can get all of our ducks in a row to get the property taxes figured out and sent out, and also to help us set our 2025 budget. That actually begins pretty much after it's set. We'll then have, I believe, a November public hearing. All of that will be posted online. I don't want to misspeak, but we will have a public hearing on the 2025 budget, wherein, depending on how this kind of unfolds, we'll be able to present to them a balanced budget because either you have to, A, raise the millage rate, overinflate some other type of revenue that I'm not comfortable doing because we're not going to realize it in 2025. So realistically, the only thing left to do is to look at a reduction in workforce. And as a city manager of 19 years, based upon the services we provide to our community, I'm very conscious, do not want to recommend to the elected body, and I'm not prepared to. So we would have to eat into fund balance, any deficit that may be realized in the 25 budget. So with that, that was a lot of stuff, trying to keep it somewhat short so that you all have an opportunity to be heard. And then I will ask Ms. Lindsay or you all if I missed anything.
One thing, one thing a lot of people don't realize too is that the city does not assess the properties. Pickens County Tax Assessors does the tax assessments, and then they provide us the tax digest. So the city doesn't actually have assessors that goes out and assesses your property. It's provided from the county. So a lot of people think that we're out assessing the property, so we did not, we just like our tax, we've been out of tax bills, so.
And with that, I will not encourage or make you or do whatever. This is somewhat informal, will have some sort of decorum relative to interaction. We'll listen, we will note your name and address for the record, and then that way, we will be able to convey to the elected body, who may or may not have an opportunity to hear you all today. So if you want to raise your hand to be recognized, state your name and address. We'll give you three minutes to be heard, and we'll just start first and first serve. Ms. Mayor.
My name is Marilyn O'Way, and I live at 183 Mountain Boulevard. And my question is, is what are the plans to increase the revenue stream? Not, I want to know the plans, to encourage businesses or something to help curtail this increase? I don't see anything new happening here in Pickens County. And so what is the city doing to encourage a revenue stream so these taxes don't keep on increasing levels?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Chris Johnson, I'm at the 1910 Carlin Road, and I have more of a question really than a statement, I guess, but it seems that this deficit is being, the burden is being put on just the homeowners in this area, not the people that rent. And I'm sure there's a fair amount of renters here too. So is there another way to, you know, generate more revenue through other types of taxes, other types of taxation that may be spread out amongst everyone and not just the homeowners? Because we're the ones that are, you know, getting burdened by all this. So that's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor.
My name is Cynthia Morse, I'm between 5 and Waldorf Ridge Road. Got a question, or it is a question, is the millage rate increase due to only the personnel, health insurance, amenities for the employees that I saw in there? What is it going to be used for?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Penny Dyke is at 270. There's a lot of good questions here, but how are those going to be answered back to us? Because it's that kind of information that we really want to hear, the explanations about why this is coming.
So at the conclusion of the public comment period, I'll try to answer the best we can. I usually do not deal in speculation and try to keep it to the format, but part of those type of questions are listed in a minute that we hope to build upon, that if we don't have the immediate answer now, we would then perhaps address at the council meetings. So although, you know, that's the best we can do at this moment. So I'm not going to ignore, so it may seem that way, I just do not want to get into a debate. Respectfully, want to hear from everyone as a public hearing. So, Ms. Mayor, anyone else?
I'm Susan Horton, I have a small business here in Jasper for the last 13 years. And I came here because of the small town building, I'm ready to leave it, I'm guilty. But I have a house here too, and me and my husband work at my business, and we're all in there. So when you go up on these taxes, every, you know, everybody has a, you know, group for tax debt, like, you know, the groceries, and the bills are just going sky high. But the problem is, is this is a small town, and I just feel like that, we're just getting hit from all directions, and it's just sad. And we came here, my house, you know, I'm only a one-income family, so when you go up on this, my house is my daughter and my business. And it's just killing, it's just killing small businesses. I just want to urge you all to think about that. I like to keep the small businesses here. I like the, I like the new stuff coming, but we've got to keep these small businesses here to keep the small town good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sir.
I'm Dave Carey, totally at Two Parker Road. I'm actually president of the newly formed nonprofit that supports locally owned businesses, the Pickens County Small Business Development Group. And I think, Brandon, there's this perception, especially at city council meetings, that there's a lot of growth and change happening when the reality is, it seems like there's not enough growth happening to be able to support, and as this person gentleman said, we're then having to expect more from existing homeowners to be taxed versus relying on the growth that we need to be sustainable. So what can we do to change that perception, especially when the perception is that growth brings negative consequences like, you know, crime or increased traffic? And we need to do something about, you know, changing that narrative because, as she said, small businesses are struggling because of a lack of density, a lack of growth, a lack of housing. There's been, you know, numerous city council meetings recently that have advocated for workforce housing that have been turned down because the voice of the people here is not being heard, and it really needs to be.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Bill Donan, I'm a Ray Morgan 77 East Church Street, and I'm not a homeowner. I'm a property business owner, small business. It's located just down the street here. And my concern dovetails with what you're talking about. As a small business owner, I came here because the economic development people encouraged me to come to Jasper because it was a great place to grow from a plant. And I said, great, and I moved my whole business up here. But as a result of that, I'm seeing increased property values for a building that was built in 1972, which has absolutely no merit. And then I'm faced with this millage rate increase, which is going to raise taxes. And then I hear we've got a huge problem with water, which is destroying the ability to bring in new businesses. Chick-fil-A may come, Chick-fil-A may not come. And if it doesn't, and it's because of the water issues, then we got a huge problem in the city and in the county. It's got to be addressed, not only from a growth perspective, but if you expect for the revenue to increase, you got to have the infrastructure to support it. And I'm not seeing that direction. I'm seeing money being spent, like the purchase of that property on top of Taup Mine over here, which is completely hidden. You got to know somebody to know that that happened and that the city spent $800,000 buying it. And that doesn't make any sense to me, to go out and try to do perpenty purchasing or when you've got an issue like no water. And we got to address that as a community, and our city fathers and the county and whatever got to figure out a way to deal with this issue because Pickens County doesn't have a water source, and that's going to stifle growth, and then we've got to live within our means. So you either raise taxes and hold things, or you set your budget, I mean, you set your services based on what you can do. And I don't see that happening. We can't just keep raising and raising and raising, or you're going to run us off. I mean, it'd be really easy to go to Dawsonville, and if we went to Dawson County, our taxes would come down as property owners and small business people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, here's your hand up.
Oh, my name is Dawn Post, I live at 57 Teton Trail. And what I'm curious about is the revenue, as that gentleman was just saying, we're all seeing the big Publix building that's being built out there. How is that helping our taxes here in the city if they're going to be here? Also, I don't see, I don't know what services I receive. I get that you said that there's the police and all that that needs to be covered, but I personally experienced with the city, a sewer issue. Then when I called the city to have it fixed, I received no response. And so now I'm being told that my taxes are going up, my water's going up, and I didn't even get the response that I needed for the services that the city is saying that they're providing, and I'm out $1,200 because of that. So obviously, I'm very upset. I moved to Jasper for the, because I heard great things were going to go on here, but I can tell you right now, I'm at the point, I'm ready to leave Jasper because of all this scenario that's going on. So that's all I have to say.
I'll put you back on that. Other than the same community, my name is Karen Lang, 70, Teton Trail. And it's a new construction that we're in, like three years old, and you don't even service our streets. We have to pay to keep our streets updated and cleaned, whatever. So we're not, like you said, we're not benefiting from a lot of things that you all put up on that list. That's Grand View Gateway Senior, it's a 55 and older community. That's Gran Via Gateway Senior. It's a 55 and older community.
Anyone else?
I'm Cynthia Morse. And I was making, I'm going to piggyback on her, the series that was recorded here. On Wildlife Bridge Road, I spoke with you and some of the other residents about our road that was developed and never, we don't have a road. We have a dirt road. And we are in the process of trying to deannex out of the city because of that. What, one of the questions that I would like answered from the mayor himself is what does he plan to do about the development of the roads in our area and on our, you know, our residential streets? I get nothing. I don't have a fire hydrant. I have no street lighting. I have no maintenance, nothing on our road. We don't even get city water. We don't even get city sewage. So I've been paying for four years of city taxes and have not received one thing from the city at all. So I want that addressed for this millage increase. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn O'Way, Mountain Boulevard. When will we be addressing everyone's concerns here and where will we see your response?
Oh, I'll give it momentarily, as best I can. I just wanted to afford people the best possible chance to be heard without me continuing to talk. And then at the conclusion of my comments, we'll adjourn the public hearing. So that's why I don't want to prematurely do it. So. Yes, ma'am.
I guess one more comment. Penny Dykes in Grand Circle. A lot of what was said up there was that, you know, the increases are due to inflationary rates. But inflation is coming down. Supply issues have resolved themselves to a large degree. So, and I know this is kind of backward that, you know, you had, but those things are actually less of an issue than they were maybe three years ago or two years ago or whatever, because it is happening. Interest rates are coming down, all those things. And I don't know how the city invests its money, like that savings account that you said. But, and this may not even be possible, I don't know, but the stock market is at an all-time high. And that money, if it had been invested, might have doubled itself by now if it had been invested. Instead of having the taxpayers assume all of this burden and we're seeing things come down, not go up, but our taxes are going up. So just.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is John. I live at 3256 Highway 53 West. I do pay city water and I have noticed that the water bill has, some of the others, has increased. My question is, is why has our water bill increased so much? And I haven't fully understood all that, but why are we not paying county water? What's the issue? Why don't we have county water if we live in the county? And why doesn't the city have their own city systems or what? You know, maybe I don't understand all of that, but that's, you know, I'm not understanding all of that because my bill has skyrocketed with water. And it's absolutely ridiculous. Especially when I live in the county and I'm having to pay city water, you know? It's just, it's not right.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Howard. I own a business here in town. Been a member of the community for many years. So I've got a little bit of history and I appreciate you coming in and putting up with the history. Problem is not from the current administration, although maybe a little bit involved. But this is a problem that's been forthcoming for years. We've seen it happening. Our infrastructure mainly is what we're dealing with. People always want the city to bring new businesses in. What's the city going to do to improve businesses? We said, well, the city's not really, that's a Chamber of Commerce thing. The city and the county and public departments are here to provide those infrastructure services to us. And they failed miserably historically. Again, it's not you. I appreciate you standing up here and taking the brunt of it. But there have always been water problems. I'm a land surveyor here. I can take you to five manholes right now that are spilling effluent, you know, onto the ground. Couple of them maybe just wide open. There's an infrastructure services that's gone wrong and been neglected for decades. Roads have been man. Learned how to drive in this county and I've dodged the same holes for 36 years. And the new ones are getting worse and the old ones have not been repaired. I think fundamentally, what everybody is probably upset about is the fact that we're not really convinced that any kind of increase in millage and tax is going to cure anything, fix anything, or bring anything up to a fundamental standard. It would be nice if we were convinced that that would happen, but it doesn't. Even our current infrastructure improvements are always based upon and rounded on an additional public service mechanism. You know, the state is funding some kind of sidewalk improvement program. Or the state is coming through soon with some new roads. So we don't really need to fix the roads now because the state's coming in. I've been with those same plans for 20 years while I dodged those same potholes for those 20 years, waiting for the state to come in. And even those services are done, kind of bored. We plant gigantic oak trees in those sidewalks and now they're completely and totally ruined. We don't take care of them. You know, we don't, we don't take care of our current infrastructure. So again, I'm not convinced that, I don't think the public is convinced either that we're going to see a matched service with increased taxes. And even if it does bring it up to par, then all it did was bring it up to par. And to think that an increase would bring it up to par is kind of sad. And I do realize that the millage rate has been lower than normal. But then again, services have been.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Do you have a written plan of what this millage rate increase is going to go towards? Is it in black and white that we can look it up or is it?
So I'll go ahead and kind of get into that because it seems like there's really two fundamental questions. And not to kind of ignore any specifics. I'll just kind of touch on the two overarching, you know, the first one being, and several folks have said it in terms of what is the city doing versus its tax base in terms of commercial versus residential. And I do think that we have made great strides with the current administration, staff and elected body of trying to be a little more conscientious of recruiting some of the, you know, things that people want, the commercial. I will tell you that in doing this profession, taxes, as communicated through this slide and verbally, is not the end-all be-all with respect to providing all the services needed for your community. It is maybe at best 25 to 30% of the needed revenue. So to increase some of the actual commercial properties, commercial properties are typically assessed, appraised, market, you know, they're praised higher. So the 40%, if you have a million-dollar appraised building and it's assessed at 40% and then taxed at the city rate, that will yield you more relative to a $250,000 house at a 40% at a few hundred. So it is important to try to find that balance of what's sustainable and what is something appropriate. I will tell you that major retailers, restaurants, grocery chains, job centers, they do rely on having a radius of available personnel to work and/or to shop. So it is that balance between you'll hear rooftops follow businesses, businesses follow rooftops. It is a balance. I do think that the maturing community of Jasper with respect to the new administration has tried to find that balance. I think many of you that have come to live here are kind of on the cutting edge of coming here in this period of transition from the way things used to be to the way things are moving forward. This particular public hearing is indicative of the fact that, not being disparaging to previous decades, but this is something that most of you may not have experienced in Jasper with respect to this level of administrative hearing. So I think that speaks volumes. With respect to the specific amount that's going to be increased, I'll tell you with respect to, if this yields an additional $800,000 worth of revenue to the city coffers, that will help to offset about $400,000 in property and casualty insurance and health insurance. So that's half of that. With respect to other revenues that have dipped to about $700,000 or $800,000, and all of this is in our 2024 community budget that you can certainly pull offline and take a look at in terms of seeing specific revenues lines and where the 2024 budget was adopted relative to the actual amended budget. So that's where you can kind of look at the specific line items. They had estimated X amount for this particular source of revenue. This is what they amended the budget to. So you'll see that decrease. So in terms of an actual specific, I do not have any terms of saying, yes, it's going to go towards increase in pay. There is no budgeted merit increases. There is no budgeted increase in personnel. So with respect to the level of service, what SASS recommendation, my recommendation is to the elected body is to at least maintain the existing level of service. And by doing so, I have a fiduciary obligation to present a balanced budget to the elected body for a December 2024 approval. Now, if the millage rate is such that they deem it to be less than what it's being advertised at 1.5 mil, then to balance the budget, we will then have to dip into fund balance. With respect to fund balance, once again, we're a little more conservative with local governments. We have certain governmental accounting that does inhibit our ability of just doing what you only do as private individuals. So unfortunately, we can't always capitalize on some of those investment pools that you only be able to do personally. We do have investment strategies that is conservative, but yet aggressive for local governments. So for the most part, there is an underlying of making sure that the professionals we do hire in order to lead our departments is very important. Some of you may know that I was here for about 32 months. September, October 2021, I left, and February 2019. I'll tell you that I was very pleased with the investment that our elected body made into our department leaders and some of our employees. Not to be disparaging to anyone who was here before. It's just we had a different level of professionalism and services that we're able to now provide and build upon. So once again, coming back May of this year, I'm very pleased with the investment that the elected body have put into our employees. But that has an elevated cost associated with it as well. We are near a market relative to paying quality, qualified individuals. I think it speaks volumes of our public safety that we do have a level of service that we have not experienced before. And I think you all expect that because I think many of you may have come from communities that may have already gone through some of the growing challenges that we're experiencing. Because you're transitioning away from the way things may have been done in the past and the way things have been moving forward. The last five years has been a transitional period. And even during that five years, there has been some transitions in management. So with respect to the ever-evolving change, I certainly respect each of your comments today. I do acknowledge you to take anything away from this to be negative. I think the public hearing affords the opportunity for you to be heard. Things that we may not have clarified, we'll certainly do our best to put that out there. And then at that point, you're more than welcome to come back and express that to the elected body this evening, 5:30. 6:00. 5:30 on the Saturday appointment. So 6 o'clock tonight. And for the most part, it's going to be a relatively light agenda specifically because we planned it that way, so it's not coincidental with weather. So we should be able to get you all out of here if you do want to come back. So with that, if you want to stick around and kind of, you know, try to get with one of us, I am going to adjourn the meeting. And if you want to get with us later on, we'll see you then. Thank you all for your attendance. We adjourn at 10:50. Thank you.